Call to order, the Dolphin County Board of Commissioners Legislative Meeting for Wednesday, April ninth, two thousand and twenty-five will begin with a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, considered republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
At this time, we will have public participation on agenda items only, and Mary Bay is here first, Controller.
My comments today address some of the events of the last week, and yes, they pertain to an agenda item. While Commissioner Hartwick has been the big topic of conversation, I offer no opinion on that matter and pray for his and his family's health and well-being. I do want to address the various steps taken this past week to seemingly use this unfortunate and unprecedented situation to target county employees both in the media and with disciplinary action. I've watched for months as the morale of our staff has dropped. I've seen fear and anxiety in countless faces. I'm an elected official who can't be fired, and I have felt that fear and anxiety, so I can't even imagine how our employees feel. But I remain quiet, as I have not seen any meaningful disciplinary actions taken against staff, and I try to be respectful of the chain of command. That changed this past week, and I can no longer remain silent about the way our staff is being treated. A number of staff working in this building faced an impossibly difficult and unprecedented situation last week. Few policies and procedures apply to how staff should deal with an elected official in a situation such as this, and many county policies simply do not apply to elected officials the same way they apply to other staff. It's also easy to reflect on this situation with twenty-twenty hindsight and point figures. The staff were dealing with a difficult situation with very little guidance and were left to figure it out the best way they could. And let's not forget, these staff all work for you. You are their bosses, which brings a power dynamic that adds a level of complication to this whole situation. This is not a common situation, and nobody had any experience with how to handle it. They made the best decisions they could in the moment. They also had their jobs to do that day, work to do and meetings to attend. They had to drop everything to deal with a complicated situation. Now we arbitrarily start rendering judgments and issuing discipline to staff. What happened to treating people with respect and dignity? Our employees play an important role in serving our public. Many of their jobs are complicated, and our employees face many challenges, the same people working through their fear and anxiety of public scrutiny and humiliation. I'm an elected official, you three are elected officials. If something in my office isn't handled correctly, it's on me. But no matter how bad the situation, people deserve to be treated with some level of respect. That principle has been seemingly ignored. We've all had to endure the weekly fighting between the three of you. I'm not going to sit quietly and allow that same hate and bad behavior affect the careers of people who are doing their very best to keep this place running under challenging circumstances. I want to be clear, this is not about politics. Those of you who know me know that I care about running the government, not the politics. This is simply about right and wrong. We all, as elected officials, have a duty to the residents to run county government as effectively as possible, and I believe that the actions toward the staff in the last week have completely been counterproductive to that goal. Thank you.
Thank you, Controller. Does anyone have comments on agenda items? Seeing none, we'll move to approval of minutes. Approval of minutes for the workshop legislative meeting. I'll make a motion for the approval of workshop legislative meeting, workshop from March nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, and legislative meeting March twenty-sixth, twenty-two.
I'll second that motion.
Motion in a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Approval of salary board meeting, March twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-five.
Second.
Excuse me, we skipped executive sessions.
Oh, I have that, I have that next, I apologize.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay. So I have a motion in a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Executive session is held between meetings, Mr. Haggerty.
Thank you, sorry about that. On Wednesday, April second, an executive session was held to obtain the advice of legal counsel regarding personnel matters and public safety. On Thursday, April third, three executive sessions were held. The first was to obtain the advice of legal counsel regarding personnel matters and public safety. The second was to obtain the advice of legal counsel regarding agency business and personnel matters. The third was to obtain the advice of legal counsel regarding personnel matters and public safety. On Tuesday, April eighth, an executive session was held to obtain the advice of legal counsel regarding personnel matters, public safety, considerations relating to the purchase or lease of real property, and active or pending litigation.
Any questions for Mr. Haggerty? Hearing none, directors and guests will begin with Ms. Whedon.
Morning.
For the salary board packet, items A and B, I would like a vote on.
Do I have a motion for items A and B?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, just to confirm, items A and B are both within the twenty-twenty-five budgeted salary numbers?
Yes.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And for the personnel packet, the vote would be requested for items one through forty-nine and fifty-one through seventy-seven.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask for a separate vote on item number seventy-five in the personnel packet today.
Understood. Do I have a motion for items one through seventy-four, and items seventy-six and seventy-seven?
There was another one that wasn't in number fifty, minus number fifty. I'll second that.
Oh, minus which one?
Fifty.
Sorry, minus fifty, okay.
Yes, that was from last week.
Yeah, that's right.
I'll second that motion. Okay. Well, are you making the motion? I'll make the motion, you go ahead and second.
I think you made the motion from one through forty-nine.
That's fine. Okay, I'll make the motion, you second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. For item seventy-five, all motion for item seventy-five?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
No.
Motion does not carry.
Okay, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Morning, Commissioners. I have no changes to the investment report that was distributed yesterday. There's also no changes to the PO packet that was sent out that's ready for your approval.
Do I have a motion for the purchase order packet?
So moved.
Second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Anything else?
Nope. Yeah, yes, while Mr. Davis is here, can we start setting up weekly meetings, Chris? Very concerned about where we're at with the budget this year and how it pertains to twenty-twenty-six.
Yeah, certainly.
As I brought up in the past, my concerns about the budget that was passed this year and how it's looking for next year, as we closed in on half a year and two months, I want to make sure that we're going through these budget items line by line.
Yeah, certainly. I can make sure that happens.
Chief Clerk's report, Mr. Haggerty.
Good morning, Commissioners. We have several items requiring board action on today's agenda. Two satisfaction pieces, several adoption assistance agreements, a budget amendment to draw down additional state funds, an agreement with Berks County relating to base daily shelter beds, three mental health, autism, and development programs agreements and agreement amendments, three drug and alcohol agreement amendments, an engagement letter for management representation from Boyer and Ritter, an agreement between the Dolphin County Prison and Viopath Technologies in order to comply with a recent FCC order, a reimbursement agreement relating to the county's bridge bundling program, four courts-related legal services agreements, a veterans affairs catering agreement, a parks and recreation agreement relating to disc golf, one repository bid, three partial real estate tax refunds, and the ratification of the termination of a risk management consulting contract. An indemnification agreement with our neighbors at the church next door remains listed in former business, and I'm again recommending tabling this item because the church's attorney remains out of town. Second, given anticipated turnout for today's meeting, we have established an overflow room on the first floor with a television tuned to today's meeting if that becomes necessary. In order to ensure that orderly and efficient use of public participation towards the end of today's meeting, we are asking folks interested in providing the standard three minutes of public comment to please sign up on the sheet provided at the back of the room. We will call individuals up in the order they sign up. I also want to share that everyone is, of course, entitled to provide public comment, but given the extent to which I know emotions are running high on several topics, I respectfully wanted to ask and remind folks to please do their best to maintain decorum and express opinions as respectfully as possible. That concludes my report unless there are any questions.
Any questions of Mr. Haggerty? Hearing none, Solicitors' Report, Mr. Owens.
Thank you, Commissioner. The matters requiring board action have been reviewed and vetted by the Solicitors' Office. They are approved for action by the board.
Any questions of Mr. Owens? Hearing none. Mr. Haggerty, if you could, just presenting the oversights officially. Ensure that everyone in need of getting those will get this. Now moving on to matters requiring board action, we have items one through twenty-six. Do I have a motion for items one through twenty-six?
So moved.
Second, any discussion? I'd like to ask a question on item twenty. I just see the dollar amount being one dollar, I just want to ensure that it's accurate.
Yes, sir, we double-checked, and that is, in fact, the correct amount.
Okay. That's the extent of my questions, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Former business, as advised by the Chief Clerk, this indemnity agreement needs to be tabled again. I'll make a motion to table this for next week. Second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right. Now we move to new business. I have some items for new business. In light of the events of the past week, I'm initiating expedited review of multiple county policies to ensure we are doing everything possible to protect the safety of our employees and the public we serve, while I recognize that the enforcement of these policies may be limited when it comes to an elected official. That does not lessen our responsibility to uphold high standards and accountability and safety across county operations. I'm directing our Solicitors' Office to conduct a thorough review of the following policies and bring forward recommendations for amendment and improvement, and if Mr. Haggerty could come and grab these. These represent the policies in which I've even highlighted some options where there might be room for improvement. This would be our Safe Driver Policy Procedure, Safety and Health Policy and Procedure, Standards of Conduct Policy and Procedure, Substance Abuse in the Workplace Policy and Procedure, Vehicle Policy and Procedure, Employee Handbook. We must take proactive steps to prevent a reoccurrence of circumstances like those that occurred last Wednesday. I expect to bring revised policies forward for consideration and a vote in a near-future meeting. I'm also directing our Chief Clerk's Office to conduct a review of all county vehicle damages involving Commissioner Hartwick in two thousand and twenty-three. The review should assess whether, in light of recent reported circumstances, additional financial responsibilities should have been assigned. The findings should be brought back to the Board of Commissioners for review. I also have two motions that will appear for a vote on next week's agenda. To be clear, I'll be asking for a second, and that will officially place them on next week's agenda. As a matter of new business, I move that Commissioner Hartwick be suspended from operating any county-owned vehicle until further notice. This action is taken in response to recent events that raise serious concerns regarding the safe and responsible use of county resources. The suspension shall remain in place pending the outcome of the ongoing policy review being conducted by the Solicitors' Office and any subsequent amendments to the county's Safe Driver Vehicle Use and Substance Abuse Policy. county Safe Driver Vehicle Use and Substance Abuse Policy. The intent of this motion is to protect the county, uh, and county employees and the public, uphold public trust, and ensure that all individuals entrusted with county resources are held to the highest standards of conduct. Do I have a second?
Second.
That'll be on the agenda for next week. Next, I move that the Board vote to require Commissioner George Hartwick to assume full financial responsibility for all damages incurred to county property as a result of the recent incident involving a county-owned vehicle. This includes any repair, replacement, or related costs as determined by the appropriate county departments. This motion reflects our responsibility to be good stewards of taxpayer resources and to ensure accountability for the use and care of county property regardless of position or title. Do I have a second? Uh, I, I've been, I've been asked to table this just in, in light of a discussion about, uh, insurance and, and deductible. We will, we will determine whether or not that is on next week's, uh, board agenda. With that, uh, Commissioners, discussion and actions, Commissioner Priest.
Thank you. As Commissioners, we have been elected to govern. We have a responsibility to do so. I want to thank the scores of residents, employees, and elected officials who have reached out to me in the past week. Your voices are heard loud and clear. However, as there is an ongoing investigation by the Attorney General's Office, I will wait to make any formal public statements until the conclusion of the investigation. And I assure you at the conclusion of the investigation, I will do so. Any comments being made prior to that would be unfair to all involved. Now, I have met with several departments this week. M H I D, Children and Youth, and I just want to report that from meeting with Children and Youth, uh, I've been told there are thirty-one vacancies out of the seventy-one positions, and only four of twenty-four positions in Protective Services are currently filled. I'll be working with Executive Assistant Julie Mackey, who will remain as the liaison to all of the Human Service Departments uh, to continue a efficient process and making sure there is no backlog until further notice. I also, um, think that we need to work with Controller Bateman and you, Commissioner Douglas, for the fine work that you both did at Dauphin County Prison as part of the recruitment of new C O's out there. Uh, and when I look at these numbers in Children and Youth, I think that would be an appropriate utilization of that firm, uh, to begin the recruitment there as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Priest, uh, for my comments. Uh, you know, as I'm sure you all know, this has been a particularly challenging week for Dauphin County. Around eleven forty A M, following last week's meeting, our staff discovered that there had been an apparent vehicle crash in our garage earlier that morning. They responded immediately, and many did their best to manage the situation with the information available at the time. I want to express my sincere gratitude to our Chief Clerk, our Deputy Chief Clerk, and our Assistant Chief Clerk for their steady leadership and support during what was an extremely stressful several days. This past year has been incredibly difficult for our government, and I remain steadfast in my commitment to serve the nearly three hundred thousand residents in Dauphin County. Without referencing any specific incident or individual, it has become clear to me in my time as an elected official, that a culture has persisted for far too long, one that has tolerated and in some cases enabled unacceptable behavior without, uh, within certain corners of our organization. To our employees, the overwhelming majority of whom come to work each day to serve their community with integrity. I want to reaffirm my commitment alongside Commissioner Priest to rebuilding this organization into one that earns your pride and delivers the standard of service our residents deserve. Thank you from the bottom of my heart for your resilience and professionalism amid ongoing distractions. Now let's refocus and get back to the important work of serving the people of Dauphin County. This time I'm going to ask for the, uh, sheet that allows me to see who's next up for public comment. Actually, next up we have correspondence, but I do not see any, so I believe there's no correspondence on the agenda today. We will, we will go with public participation. What I will do is I will, uh, read, uh, the individual who is up and the next two, just so that everyone is aware of the order. Uh, so Zachary Davis, uh, and then there will be Gina Vasquez and then Dr. Kamika Campbell.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning, Mr. Davis.
Uh, my name is Zachary Davis. I am a resident of Fulton County. Um, however, what I'm bringing up is solely regarding Dauphin County. Um, I was not going to bring up anything over the past week, um, but I will say this, the Controller is wrong. While there may not be written policies regarding the treatment, common sense tells people to do the right thing. Just because their bosses are, and I don't use this word lightly, fucking up, that does not stop the employees and elected officials from doing the right thing more. They did not, and they need to be held accountable for their inactions as much as they should be for their actions. This applies to the borough officials, to the county staff, from the time Commissioner Hartwick entered the elevators to the time the meeting was adjourned. As quoted in the movie Remember the Titans, attitude reflects leadership. That's all I will say on this topic. I did message Commissioner Douglas last week regarding this matter, but I do need to expand further. I have filed in the last six months two separate right-to-know law requests to the Open Records Officer Vincent Peace regarding email communications to and from Dauphin County adult probation, as well as the county policy regarding the Act Forty-four Probation Bill. Both times, Mr. Peace forwarded my request to Stephen Libhart, the Rule Five-O-Nine Administrator. That is actually falical. Rule Five-O-Nine applies to financial records. Nowhere in my request did I request financial records. As a result of this, both my requests were denied as not being party to Rule Five-O-Nine. This seems like a very straightforward monel claim under Forty-two U S Code, Section nineteen eighty-three. As it is his standard procedure to do this, given both claims. As we all know, a procedure is nothing more than unwritten policy. It is extremely defined that this procedure is not what Mr. Pace was taught to do when he first took over the role of Open Records Officer. I can forward any communications and decisions if the Commissioners request. However, if no action is taken prior to May fifteenth, I will be filing a suit in the Mill District of Pennsylvania in this matter. I am simply a medically retired Marine with access to Westlaw, who hasn't really put too much weight into my investigation of the county yet. Nobody wants me to put my full effort in. I have nothing but time
Thirty seconds.
and access to this. Given all the issues of Dauphin County to includes its judges, jail, police department commissioners, and staff, I can very well dive headfirst into a myriad of issues that regards this county. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Next up, we have Gina Vasquez, then Dr. Kamika Campbell, then Louis Butts. Oh, okay. All right, next up, Dr. Kamika Campbell, then Louis Butts, then Jean Stilp.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning.
Good morning, uh, fellow residents and visitors. My name is Dr. Kamika Campbell, and I speak today with both compassion and concern. As a child of an alcoholic, I've seen firsthand how substance abuse and use can damage lives, not just the person struggling, but their families, their coworkers, and their communities. So I want to start by saying, I don't want to see George Hartwick, our Commissioner, discarded. I want him to get the help he may need, and I want, um, and I hope those closest to him offer him more than just public praise. I want them to offer him real support. I also want to thank those of you on this board who have spoken up, and I also understand the instinct to wait until the legal processes play out. But let's be honest, a DUI has been filed. County property has been damaged over many years, and many people in this community are raising their voices not out of malice, but out of deep concern because the calls for accountability are not unwarranted. They are rooted in a longstanding pattern of issues that has now come to a very serious and public moment. Commissioner Hartwick himself has signed public letters calling for accountabilities for and from others. So this is not about punishing anyone. It's about applying the same standard of responsibility that we expect from all of our elected officials and community leaders. The, to the broader community, I've heard people say, lots of folks in this county have driven after drinking, and that's exactly the problem. This moment isn't just about one man, it's a wake-up call. We clearly need more public education, awareness, accountability, and honest conversations about the dangers of drinking and driving. This is a serious issue, and we have to stop normalizing it and also sweeping it under the rug, and that's for all of us. So I'm asking for leadership, not just from our Commissioners, from this board, not from the Justice Board, but also from each other. Let's grow from this, let's not just try to manage the moment, because that's how it's coming across a lot of people. That we're just trying to manage this, and, and hopefully, you know, George Hartwick will bounce back and be sitting in this chair again. And I, and I'm saying that, is that what we really want? We want to sweep this under the rug and just be like, well, the next time, you know, we'll just hope he does better? Or we, are we going to, uh, keep setting this example for the community? Is that what we want? Is that what we want? Rhetorical question. So let's grow from this, let's be honest, and let's be consistent. Let's be consistent, and let's be better. And I also want to publicly thank Mary Bateman for her comments. Thank you for being honest. Thank you for being a leader. And you know, we are come from different political parties, but I respect everything that she said today, and I thank you for your comments, and, um, thank you to the Commissioners and to our community.
Thank you, Dr. Campbell. Next up, we have Louis Butts and then Jean Stilp.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Butts, how are you?
Excellent. Um, in moving forward.
Excuse me, sir, could you please state your name for the record?
Louis Butts.
Thank you.
In moving forward, we still have to, um, look at oncoming tariffs. We need to be stout in industry, we need textile, we need fabric industry. We need to bring back how we used to be in the sixties regards to making steel, making aluminum. We have to think about our infrastructure in moving forward. We have a lot to do. Now, Trump is reduced, making it hard for us to educate our kids, making it hard for us to feed each other. We're Pennsylvanians, we're agriculturists. We must redesign and make sure we feed our children and make sure we feed our people with jobs. Um, the Mennonite and the Amish community make their own clothes. We have to look at all our resources and redesign ourselves to take care of ourselves like we always have as Pennsylvanians, as Harrisburgonians. We do this, so don't be fret, but we can't be distracted by other things and refocusing on what we need to produce in Pennsylvania, in central Pennsylvania, and in Harrisburg. I'm designing a Harrisburg, uh, city farm to where we can have cows and, and sheep within the city, so our children can learn how to, um, do agriculture. We have the Farm Show, we have D C N R. We need to look at how the state agencies have education modules that we can filter in and feed our children information and materials that are right here from the state. People are always worried about how the state can help our city. Well, that's how the state can help our city. D C N R has a K through twelve program, D E P has a K through tw- I'm a library, I'm, I'm, I'm from the state. I know what the state has, and we need to filter in to our children so we have access. I'm proposing a Harrisburg International Aquarium right down at the old post office. We can, I think we can solve cancer with sharks. And I, I feel as though we can bring a new industry, a new economic base, and we can compete with Hershey, Gettysburg to bring revenue. That's the key. If we don't have any revenue, who's a mathematician? It's zero. So what are you, um, wagering in, in using your arithmetic for? We need revenue so we can have mathematicians, so we can budget something. Let's be aggressive, let's be bullish about how we want to narrow our city. I appreciate it, okay? And I appreciate everybody for listening and giving me an opportunity to display some of the ideas that make Pennsylvania a stronger place. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Butts. Uh, next up, we have Mr. Stilp, and then I will open it for anyone else in the room who, uh, would like to make public comment.
Uh, Jean Stilp. And those T M I restart. Uh, first of all, uh, uh, just express a moment of hope. I hope that, uh, George Hartwick is actually in rehab right now. I hope he's not there. I hope he eventually, when he recovers, he can be a beacon for, a beacon for, um, a beacon for others who are suffering from the same disease. Uh, I think that he can be, uh, uh, let's see, be, uh, excuse me, because of his stuff in the past, his, what he administered in the past, I hope he can learn from that and, uh, and not face impeachment and that his, uh, disease, uh, be, uh, not cured, but how should I say, he understands what he has. Second of all, um, in way back, I filed a, a case in the Supreme Court of Pennsylvania against the legislative pairage and won that case against the legislators. Secondly, I filed a case, uh, against the, um, Ethics Commission and the, um, and, uh, Corbett, when he was Attorney General, and, uh, won it before the Third Circuit. Uh, and we won that Third Circuit, uh, unanimously about changing the Ethics Commission, and we did that. In the past few years, I won seventeen settlements on the First Amendment issues in federal court across the Commonwealth. Last week, as you know, I filed suit against you folks and your Department of, uh, Safety and individual in the Department of Safety. Uh, today I'm here to say that, um, uh, that, that I'm open to a settlement conference between myself and the, our group and the Solicitor there to work it out, to work it out rather than having the county spend taxpayer dollars in court. Before I file my interrogatories, we can actually work this out and, uh, not have to go that far, and, uh, as we know, uh, certain individuals in the county may have gone too far. I understand that happens sometimes, as by the recent examples, so let's try and work this out. We can work it out whereby, whereby, if we have corrections as a part of public safety, that may benefit everybody. It may benefit, benefit planning. Lastly, in regard to you folks in planning and the county planning, we have seven hundred active tons right down there of highly illegal nuclear waste that'll be active for tens of thousands of years. At the same time, we have, uh, the, the opportunity to stop three hundred fifty more tons of the high, most highly poisonous stuff from coming into the county by working against the restart of Three Mile Island. Public safety is supposed to limit, uh, limit the, uh, the, what we're faced with, any kind of, any kind of threats. If we don't have a, the nuclear plant turned back on, which is in our power, we have the ability to limit that to zero, zero, uh, zero risk, and so that's what I'm for. So, uh, I hope we can meet on the, hope we can meet on the, um, on that, this suit I filed on the taxpayer suit, and we can meet on that and work it out, uh, to everybody's benefit. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Stilp. Is there anyone else for public comment? If you did not sign up, that's okay. You're welcome to come up at this time. Hello, Pam, how are you?
Morning, Commissioners. Good to see you. Um, there's so many things that I have learned.
Excuse me, could you please state your name for the record? I'm sorry.
Uh, it's Pamela Parsons, City of Harrisburg. There's so many things that I have learned since I've started coming here. Um, similar to the things that I have learned over the past, uh, five years going to prison board meetings. And I learn them as I go, like the fees at the prison. Um, learning how contracts are awarded, how people get appointed to boards. And sometimes those things kind of come as a surprise, like, oh, I didn't know about that. I didn't know I should have asked about that. Um, and so one of the things that I learned last week is that, um, the county is paying nearly a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in leases for vehicles for county commissioners. And that came as a surprise to me, probably the biggest surprise of everything that I saw in all the news articles last week, as well as the things I witnessed with my own eyes. And I think about that in terms of the fact that, um, you know, sitting through the budget hearings and learning where money goes was really, was a really important process. And really important learning process for me. And I think about that money for vehicles juxtaposed with the fact that we have employees at the Dauphin County Library System who have been there for decades and make less than twenty dollars an hour. who have been there for decades and make less than twenty dollars an hour. Do I think that Commissioners should have access to a county-owned vehicle? Absolutely, I do. I think all of our elected officials should have access to a county-owned vehicle. That makes complete sense to me and probably is less than paying mileage if you're going out of town to a conference or something. Do I think you should have daily access? Absolutely not. And as was pointed out in news articles and some of the research that I did on my own, none of our surrounding counties do the Commissioners have access to vehicles. And there's actually fewer counties that, where that is provided for Commissioners than do. And considering the budget that is facing us and what may be facing us with what is yet to come over the next several years, I think that is one place where we can save some money. Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
Before we do, we have Retirement Board if you make the announcement then, but so moved.
Second, we are adjourned. We will begin Retirement Board meeting in ten minutes.